Hello, we're all set. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Revere School Committee on Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Would everyone please stand for pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, second on the agenda is recognition. I don't believe...
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Here.
Mr. Sinella?
Absent.
Ms. Thai?
Here.
Mr. Visconti?
Here.
Mayor Urego?
Absent.
And Mr. Feranti?
Here.
Okay, we'll go to the superintendent's report, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Feranti. So, the first item on the superintendent's report tonight is actually a presentation by our Revere High School students who attended the G20 Summit in Beijing, which this community approved their travel for that awesome adventure several months ago. And I'd like to begin by welcoming their advisor, Mr. Mark Fellows, who led them on that terrific adventure.[95.11][95.11](APPLAUSE). And Mr. Fellows can just say a word or two about his experience, and then we'll turn it right over to the kids who will tell us about their experiences.
So, I'll just briefly comment about how much we appreciate the opportunity to engage in such an adventure that we didn't ever expect to be involved in, and how proud, excuse me, our students made us in their involvement in what came to be a sort of experience in international diplomacy and in getting to meet students from all over the world, as well as seeing a very unique place and appreciating the culture there, and really learning a lot about some topics that I think are going to help enhance our entire community moving forward. They came back with lots of fresh ideas about how to make Revere ready for the 21st century, so we're looking forward to them being involved in that process.
Can you imagine your video?
First of all, again, I just want to thank the school committee for allowing us to do this. It was an experience that I never really thought I would be able to experience, especially in high school at such a young age. I think that we all took a lot from this, and it was just an amazing learning experience. So, here we have a video that was made by Melissa, who also went on the trip, and this video kind of highlights not only the experiences and the sites that we visited that were so rich with Chinese history and culture, but also the experiences that we went through as representing countries, as delegates of the G20.
The Commonwealth of Australia is tremendously grateful for such an opportunity that promotes the importance of global action and discussion that leads to the progressive change because it is here, in these gatherings where we as leaders can peacefully improve our society as a whole, create smarter cities, and greater lives for all.
As Nelson Mandela once said, "After climbing a great hill, one only finds that there are many more hills to climb."
The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia is all proud but honored to stand here, and we believe that we are making sense towards the future. Thank you.
I'm with the Model G20, and I've been asked by Sarah to give a couple of words. Revere has got a special place in our heart here at the Model G20. We've met a lot of young, passionate students that have been coming back, and so, love Revere. We're also looking up to the participants to go back to your city and to be able to impact some change, whether it be at the local level, at the state level, and potentially even at the national level. Just stay passionate, stay curious, and we always encourage our young people to not do things alone. So, if you want to get organized, grab a clipboard, lace up your shoes, go doorknob, get activated. What we want you to do is just to continue to be passionate, to continue to stay active, and to engage the people around you to address the challenges that you're facing in your city. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and wish you the best, and hope to see more of you join us in the upcoming Boston Model G20. That's going to be at the end of the show. All the best.
There is a second one. We're not sure...
Yep. Are we going to go right into the second video? Or do you want to talk for a few minutes?
Do you want me to talk for a bit?
Sure. Yeah.
So, I'd just like to say that this was just an amazing experience. I think I speak on behalf of all of us. It was just incredible. We learned so much. We took so much out of it. We were like little sponges, always just absorbing ideas and stuff said to us and things that they wanted us to know, and I just think that this video isn't as insightful, but it just really shows how much of a great time we had together with our chaperones, with Ms. Curry, Mr. Fellows. Like, we just really got to bond and really had an amazing experience, and yeah, I'm just thankful and grateful for that. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Well, it certainly looks like you guys had a little bit of fun, along with all of that learning. Does anybody want to come up and tell us maybe one of the things that you found to be the most different between the culture in China and the culture here in Revere?
One of the limitations on that was there was a question in the hotel for five days.
To answer your question... Okay. To answer your question, I think something that was so dramatically different is the culture. I remember this exactly on the first day, where we'd be talking with people from all around the world, and our conversations were mainly about like what they do at home compared to what we do at home, how their school systems work, how their cities work, and how do ours. And in terms of Chinese culture, we learned how isolated their nation is. When we were able to visit historical sites such as the Forbidden City and the Confucius Museum and Temple, one of the biggest things is that the native people there were just so shocked to see our faces, both young and also Western, in a sense, and it kind of shows a lot about how they live and how secluded they are from the world. And also, like, how we had to interact with others was just different. We couldn't talk about things freely as we do here there, just because sometimes it's not the best thing that you want to bring up, but it was definitely a very different kind of thing to see there.
Does anybody in the committee have questions? Ms. Gravellisi?
When I was watching the first video, one of the presenters said, you know, I'm not sure what his name was, that he wants you kids from Revere to... Good, here we go. Find something or bring something out of this summit that you might be passionate about and you might want to bring back and make some type of positive change. Can anybody tell me something that they might have felt passionate about that they learned that they might want to bring back and make some change in our community or in our state?
Hi, my name is Jason. I think one thing that I felt really passionate about, kind of alludes to the question from Dr. Kelly, it's that we found a lot of similarities in terms of the culture between the people, not just the differences. Like, I had a roommate, his name was also Jason ironically, and he was a Chinese student, and it was so unique to hear like the similar struggles of freaking out about like SAT scores and tests and trying to find like the similarities between our groups. And he also came from a less privileged background, which I found really interesting because we both essentially had the same worries and ideals. So, something that I really felt passionate about was just like the idea of communication between cultures and where we can sort of find that happy medium. And I'm still in contact with a lot of the people from there, and I miss them a lot. So, I think it was really fascinating to just see like, despite being so different, we were also so similar in so many like unique ways.
Very nice, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Fellows about what he thinks. Did you observe that the kids changed over the period of time? I'm sure they did. I'm sure this is one of the experiences in their lives that they will never forget, and I hope you change. I mean, because you had such wonderful experiences, you had a wonderful experience with this group too, so I...
Absolutely, and I feel as though the best thing about the experience is exactly that, that they had their worldviews broadened and that they stepped into the role of leadership in a way through the simulation that wouldn't be possible for them under other circumstances. They may see themselves as having some effect on their community or having some effect on their family or immediate circle of friends, but imagining themselves in the position of leaders who could be orchestrating policy for a nation, I think put them in a different mindset about what their impact on the world could actually be. And over the course, the program does a good job at training them to see themselves that way and giving them the skills to do negotiation properly and to really dig down into the policy issues. And then toward the end of it, you can see their confidence building around those points. You can see their ability to be able to communicate with other members of, you know, there were students from 19 different countries there, so people from just about everywhere. And you could see also them imagining themselves in positions of power, not just taking orders from others, but orchestrating policy themselves in the future. And again, that could be maybe at the local level. We hope that they're involved citizens in the Revere community, of course, but we could see them just about at any level having that level of success. And of course, it was rewarding at the end of the conference, at the award ceremony, when half a dozen of our students were recognized for their contributions and awarded scholarships. We still don't know exactly how much the scholarships are, but we do know that each of... A good, you know, they all did such a great job and made us so proud, including some that we weren't really sure were going to rise to the occasion. They all did, so...
How many of you got awards? Stand up so we can applaud you.
And we applaud Mr. Fellows for having the vision. For having the confidence in all of you, that's what has been so great. You've been here for quite a while now, Mark, and I think the way I have, you have seen the change dramatically in our student body and in our confidence in themselves and the ability to deal with all situations. And congratulations to you for seeing that in these kids and then making them see it in themselves. It's a wonderful thing to watch them grow that way. Thank you.
And before we let these kids go home and do their homework, I should recognize Ms. Tiffany Curry, who went with Mr. Fellows on the trip to Beijing and helped do all of the coordinating and fundraising. She wasn't able to join us tonight. I'm sure she's at some other school event, but very thankful to both Ms. Curry and Mr. Fellows for their hard work overtime, spending their vacation time with our kids in China. So, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, one-minute recess.
a few of the students want to share a little bit about their experiences in Beijing and with the G20 Summit. So, will you guys introduce yourselves in your grade and then...
Hi, I'm Mina. I'm a sophomore here. So, one of my core values as a person is inspiration, passion, and I think that any problem in the world can be solved through passion and through hard work. And through the summit, I like remember this like one specific example, and like we were on our way home from the Summer Palace, and there was this kid sitting next to me on the bus. And like, he was... His family was from India, but like he moved to Chicago when he was like around five. And he told me this, like, he turned to me, he didn't even say his name, and the first thing he asked me was like, "What is your passion?" And I was like, "What kind of question is that?" And I was just like, so confused, I'm like, "What is this kid saying to me? I've never met him before, like, what is, what's going on?" And he's like, "No, what gets you to get up in the morning?" And I was like, "Honestly, it's like making a change in the world." And then he told me this like really intricate story about how he developed the software where he like worked with people that had football injuries, and now he was working with Northwestern and working along with them and starting these other programs. And I was just sitting there stunned, and it was like, wow, like this kid had a passion, he had a goal, he was inspired, and he changed, like he made an impact on the world. And it's like hearing stories like that, not only from like the kid that sat next to me on the bus, but like every single one of those, like over 300 kids that were there, and saying, "Hey, I can be like one of you, like I can change the world." And that kind of brings back to the idea that like everything starts back at home. Like, you can start from here, you can start from anywhere. And it was just like really inspiring and made me more a passionate person.
Hello, I'm Yashiro Tsukaki. First, I want to start off by thanking all of you guys. This was like the most adventurous trip I've ever taken, and it's a trip of a lifetime. Thank you, guys. What most fascinated me, what I was fascinated most about during this experience was the skills I developed. Being a public speaker was very hard for me before this, and being in front of you now isn't as frightening as it used to seem to me. Another thing that I really am captivated by is being an international citizen and being able to help people around the world. And all people, even coming from different backgrounds, are able to come together for different reasons, but although they're coming together for the same common goal of helping each other and being more united as a world and as a global civilization.
Hi, my name is Saleh Young. I'm also a sophomore, and one thing I would like to like highlight about the trip is the gratitude and kindness of many of the students there. Every student would come up and talk to you, and even my roommate, who's like the most sweetest person, she gave me like some presents from China. She's part of, from the southern part of China, and she gave me like a bookmark and like postcards from her area. And I wasn't prepared because I didn't know people would give gifts, and also like other people's roommates would give me gifts too, so I thought that was so kind and sweet. So, I like wanted to give back also, so I gave them some American money because I didn't have anything on me. So, I gave my roommate $20, and then she was like, "Oh, what is this?" And like the conversion, so I did the conversion, and like the difference, the price difference from what we're used to and what they're used to is so different. Like, she was shocked that I was giving her this amount of money, but like to us, $20 isn't like what we see as a high value that often. So, like the difference between the value and the culture is very different. I like, also like everyone is so kind, like again, everyone is so kind. They would come up to you and ask you about your name, who you are, where you're from, and people generally want to know who you are and what you're planning to bring to the summit. And the summit also made me realize that I can be an intimidating person, because when I was there, someone came up to me after everything was over, and she's like, "You intimidated me the whole time." And I was like, I'm like five foot four and weigh like 90 pounds. I don't understand how I can do that. So, it was really cool to understand, to show how much I've changed throughout the beginning of my, from freshman year to now where I can speak in front of people and not be scared and not back down from a negotiation. Thank you.
We'll have to remember to give you guys some Revere swag next year when you go.
Hi, my name's Benal, so I'm just going to keep this really short because as we saw from the video, quite emotional. So, this experience was truly one of a kind and one of a lifetime, and I was able actually to go to the G20 back in 2018 in Boston, and that was mind-blowing. And then I, you know what, I knew that going to China was going to be quite the experience, but I never thought it would be what it was like, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who made this trip possible because when I first applied, I really did not think it was going to happen. I was like, "There's no way that I'm really going to get on a plane and go to China." Like, there's no way. And we all used to talk, we were like, "We're really going to China? We're really going." And we came back, and then we're all like, we literally just went to China, like it was crazy. I want to say like a big thank you to Mr. Fellows and Ms. Curry for being like our chaperones there and pretty much our parents, like putting our lives in their hands. And I know everyone touched upon like the international students, but I'd just like to say thank you to like everyone who went. Like, we're literally like a family now. We have a bond like no other, like it's not even a friendship at this point, like they're stuck with me for life at this point. And yeah, I'd just like to say thank you, and this experience is amazing, and I really hope that the school can see that G20 should be something that should be continued in the school and an opportunity for even more kids, because after going to this program, I was able, the best way I can explain it is like when you're a kid and you think that you can do all these amazing things, and then you come to high school and you're working like in all these APs and stuff, and you're like, "Maybe I'm not going to be an astronaut or like the President of the United States or something like that." But then you go to a program like this, and you're like, "But I am, and I'm going to do those things," you know, "And I'm going to do big things," so, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. We really appreciate it, and we are really, really thrilled that you had such an awesome experience, and we have to figure out how we can get on that plane with you next time. So, now we'll take that one-minute recess so you guys can go home and do your homework. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Feranti. So, the next item on the superintendent's report is actually just an informational item. We wanted to share with families who haven't already heard, although the way news spreads, I imagine most know already, that we have set the commencement exercises for the class of 2019 to occur on Wednesday, June 5. And that's a little bit of a change, so I want to highlight it for families. The last several years, we've been doing graduation on a Thursday night, but this year, graduation is set for the Wednesday night. There'll be more information forwarded regarding specific times, what time people should move to the stadium in order to get seating and all of that. That'll be forthcoming from the high school. Now, I'll let Dr. Porello share that, but just so people can plan accordingly, Wednesday, June 5, will be graduation night with a rain date of Thursday, June 6. The next item is also informational. We had a number of students that went to the regional spelling bee this year in Lynn, and we just wanted to share a little bit of information because the people at Scripps National Spelling Bee had changed the criteria this year. It was different than it was in the past. Because so many kids, so many schools are now participating in the spelling bee, the number of participants at the regional level was exceeding their capacity. And so, this year, quite suddenly, actually, they notified us that students, in addition to winning their school spelling bee, would also have to submit a written, a sample of their writing in order to qualify for the spelling bee. So, it was very different. It was something we weren't aware of until it was actually happening, but we were really excited that we had seven schools out of our nine middle and elementary schools. Seven kids, one from each of seven schools, qualified for the regionals, which I thought was really impressive considering how they were limiting participation. So, we just wanted to put that out there. Several of the kids did quite well at the spelling bee. We are going to be, the school committee has put in a request to recognize the first, second, and third place winners from each of the three elementary and middle schools, which we will do at our April meeting. We will be notifying those winners as well as their parents to attend, and we will, of course, then also recognize the seven kids who went... Um, and we will, of course, then also recognize uh the seven kids who went on to the regionals. Uh, the next item on the superintendent's report is actually an update about the middle school placement lottery, um, which I think most people know is scheduled for Thursday, April 11th at 5:00. Dr. Vidal is actually going to present this report, so I will switch it to him.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Uh, so as many people know, we have a lottery system for our three middle schools, so our six elementary schools feed into three middle schools. Uh, that placement lottery will occur on Thursday, April 11th at 5:00 PM. It is here in the Franti School Committee Room at Revere High School. It will also be broadcast live on Channel 22. So if you want to watch it at home, you can watch it on Channel 22, Revere TV, or parents may attend here in the school committee room, but due to space capacity, uh, children may not attend. So this year, students were, from each fifth grade class were able to uh take a tour of all three elementary schools and then they choose their first, second, I'm sorry, all three middle schools. And then they choose their first, second, or third choice for middle school. So each fifth grader has that opportunity and one-third of each class, each fifth grade class goes to one of our three middle schools. So this year, there are eight lotteries and they will be organized by first, the largest, and then those orders will be Wayland, Hill School, Garfield Elementary School, Lincoln, then Paul Revere, and finally Beachmont, which is our smallest school. So a little detail on some of the specifics. For example, the Wayland will have a lottery for students who chose RMA first as well as SBA. So if you look at this chart, the Wayland School has a total of 132 fifth graders. There are 11 students who are in special programs. So that makes 121 students who will enter the lottery. If we divide that by the three middle schools, there are approximately 40 seats per middle school. So the, the school with the largest choice is the Romney Marsh Academy with 68, so that'll have 41 seats. Garfield Middle School has 40 seats and SBA has 40 seats. So if we look at the Garfield Middle School, there were nine requests with one sibling request. At the RMA, we have the 41 seats available. There were 68 requests, therefore there will be a lottery to this. There are five, there are five sibling or employee children and there is one, there is one group of twins going to the Romney Marsh Academy, uh, that have requested the Romney Marsh Academy. And if we look at the SBA, there are 40 seats available and 44 requests. So there are seven siblings and employment, uh, and children of employees that, that have requested to attend the SBA. So what that means for the lottery is that going to the RMA, we have 63 names on 62 cards. That is because one card contains both twins. So there are 27 more students that requested the RMA than are available. So all of those students who don't get cho- chosen in, in the first round to attend the RMA will attend the Garfield Middle School. Going to the SBA, we have 37 names on 37 cards. So the first 33 names will go to the SBA and the remaining four seats will all go to the Garfield Middle School. At the Hill, we will only have one lottery going to the SBA. The Hill School has 136 fifth graders. Seven students will be attending, attending special programs, so there are 129 students in the lottery. That averages out to 43 seats per school. At the Garfield Middle School, we had 21 requests, including two sibling or children of employees, and there are two twins, two sets of twins. At the Romney, there were 43 requ- uh, 43 seats available and there are 41 requests, which includes the four siblings and students of employees. And finally, at the SBA, where we will have the lottery, there are 43 seats and 67 requests. Three of those requests were siblings or children of employees. And in this case, there are six sets of twins that have requested the SBA. So for those remaining seats, there are 64 names on 62 cards. So the first names pulled will, will go to the SBA. And the remaining 24 seats, there are still two seats available at RMA and 22 seats available at GMS. And that is because there is only 41 requests at RMA for the 43 seats. So after the lottery to the SBA, there will be two cards pulled, they'll, they'll get their second choice if it's RMA or Garfield Middle until that is, until those seats are filled and the remaining students will all attend the Garfield Middle School. At the Garfield, there'll only be one lottery as well for Garfield Elementary School. That will be a lottery to Garfield Middle School. There are a total of 116 students in the fifth grade. Two will atten- will attend special programs, therefore there's 114 students who will enter the lottery. There are 38 seats per school. So for the Garfield Middle School, there were 38 seats and there are 44 requests, including four sibling and employment requests. There are two sets of twins. At the Romney, there are 38 seats available and 34 requests, including three siblings and children of employees. So all of them will get their choice of the Romney. And the SBA has 38 seats, 36 requests, eight siblings and uh children of employees. So those 36 requests will be honored at the SBA. So going to GP, GMS, we have 40 names on 39 cards due to the twins. So the first, uh, the first 38 names will be pulled, I'm sorry, 34 names will be pulled and there are six seats remaining. Of those six seats, four will go to Romney and two will go to SBA. So as they're picked out, it'll depend on who the student's second choice is and they'll fill the seats accordingly. At the Lincoln, we'll have two lotteries, one going to Romney Marsh Academy and one going to SBA. There are 110 fifth graders at the Lincoln School. There are 11 students who will be attending special programs, therefore there are 99 students entered into the lottery. That works out to 33 seats per school. At the Garfield Middle School, for those 33 seats, we had 14 requests, including two siblings or children of employees. At the Romney, we had 33 seats for 41 requests and there are three siblings and children of employees. And at the SBA, for those 33 seats, we had 44 requests. There will be three sibling and, and children of employees and two sets of twins. So when we conduct the lottery for the Romney Marsh Academy, there are 38 names on 38 cards. The first 30 that are pulled will go to the Romney Marsh Academy and the remaining eight seats will all go to Garfield Middle School. At the SBA, there are 41 names on 40 cards. We'll pull the first 39 names and then there are 11, I'm sorry, the first 29 names and then the 11 remaining seats will all go to Garfield Middle School. Paul Revere, there will be one lottery to the Romney Marsh Academy. At the, at the Paul Revere, there are 80 seats, uh, 80 students in fifth grade. Four will attend special programs and there are 76 kids entered into the lottery. Works out to 25.3. So the largest request going to the Romney will have the extra seat. So Garfield Middle will have 25 seats for 10 requests. The, the Romney Marsh Academy will have 26 seats and there are 48 requests for the Romney Marsh Academy, four being siblings and children of employees. And at the SBA, there were 25 seats. We had 18 requests, including two sibling and, and children of employees and two sets of twins. So when we do the lottery for the RMA, we'll have 44 names on 44 cards. So after the lottery is completed, there will be 22 seats remaining and seven will go to SBA and 15 will go to GMS. And finally, the Beachmont will have one lottery as well. They have 52 fifth graders. Uh, the Beachmont will have a lottery to Garfield Middle School. There are 52 Beachmont students in the fifth grade. None of them will attend special programs, so all 52 will be entered into the lottery. There are 17 seats per school. And since there is one left over, we'll have 18 seats where they're most requested. So the, the Garfield Middle School will have 18 seats from the Beachmont. There were 22 requests, including three siblings and children of employees. There were 17 seats at the Romney, 14 requests and one sibling. 17 seats at the Susan B. Anthony, 16 requests, including two siblings or children of, of employees. So we'll have 19 names on 19 cards for the Garfield Lottery from Beachmont. After those names are pulled, there'll be four seats remaining. Three will go to the Romney Marsh Academy and there is one seat available at SBA. So one thing I'd like to add is that these numbers represent the number of students who are currently enrolled. All fifth graders who have made their choices, those choices are final. We can't have any changes after tonight's lottery. If anyone moves into the city between now and the lottery, they will enter into the lottery. They'll have an opportunity to, to choose that may adjust the numbers a little bit. Or if someone moves, we find out that they're going to a private middle school or if they move out of the city between now and then, these numbers may be adjusted slightly. But this is our best estimate thus far. And again, at this time, we have, we have received all of our requests, so all of those requests are final and we can't make any changes to those.
Thank you, Dr.
Okay. Are there any questions for the committee for Dr. Vidal?
So I'll, I'll just add one thing. I want to point out to families that in situations like this, Dr. Vidal just described that the Beachmont School will have one lottery to Garfield Middle. That means all of the kids who selected Romney Marsh or Susan B. Anthony as their first choice have received that placement. There will be no lottery. Those kids will get their first choice seat. And the same is true for the five other elementary schools that um Dr. Vidal went through. If I look back at the Paul Revere, they're having a lottery only to the Romney Marsh Academy. So all of the kids at Paul Revere who selected Garfield as their first choice or Susan B. Anthony as their first choice have rece- will receive those placements and there will be no lottery. So just to, just to be clear. And also just a reminder that on the night of the lottery, um, children will not be admitted. So parents who choose to attend uh the lottery in this room on um April 11th uh need to not be accompanying children. The lottery will be livestreamed on TV if people want to watch it at home, Channel 22.
All right, one more, Dr. Kelly, you have on the agenda.
Yes, the final item. Dr. Vidal is also going to talk about this as well. Uh, one of the things that we've been um working on as a district, which has been um an area of work across the state and actually across the country, is addressing the social and emotional needs of our students. We have certainly seen an uptick in the number of students needing care in that area. Um, and we want to think about what we can be doing to make sure that our classroom practices and our school practices are effectively addressing those needs and that we have the staff in place to help those kids receive the services in a real-time manner when they are needing those services. So one of the things we've been looking at is the structure of our student support services in general across the district. And Dr. Vidal is going to talk about some ideas we have for making those changes. Now, I will lead with this caveat. Any changes necessarily will be dependent on how our budget turns out. If we get the infusion of funding from the state that many have said will be forthcoming this year, that it could be a reality that we could at least pilot this program in a couple of our schools. Um, we think that a more comprehensive treatment of social and emotional needs and behavioral and mental health issues for students will help all of our kids achieve at higher levels. Um, but right now, we want to present this as an idea that we're thinking about. We're going to be in the near future seeking input from parents. Of course, we welcome feedback from the school committee and we'll be seeking input from teachers and our school leaders in each of the school sites as well. Uh, but Dr. Vidal will describe what we hope will be a forthcoming program.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So again, I just want to thank you for allowing me to address this very important issue. Uh, we've seen that our schools have changed over the past few years and addressing student behavioral and mental health has become paramount to providing a, a strong education uh for the whole child. We've seen increasing student needs over the past decade or so and some of the things that we've uh seen that, that students are coming in is we've seen an increase in the poverty, experiencing trauma for families. Uh, social, emotional needs have been escalating recently where we're really trying to understand more about some of the needs of our students. We're noticing that behavioral health and mental health is also something that as we learn more about, uh, we want to be able to address it appropriately. And we understand that addressing these needs is really essential to allowing students their ability to access the curriculum and to learn to their best potential. So sometimes there are barriers to students' learning. Some of these are included here and if we can address those appropriately, students will be able to learn at higher levels. So just a quick snapshot of, of what student services have looked like. And one picture I want to paint is over a 12-year period, I think of our seniors, some of the kids who presented tonight, uh, they're going to graduate in the class of 2019. In 2007, those students were in kindergarten. When they entered our schools as five-year-olds in kindergarten, the, the district was different. At that time, we had about 5,855 students. We employed seven guidance counselors, nine school adjustment counselors or social workers. And at that point, we had no school psychologists or uh BCBA or behavior specialists. So those are board-certified behavior analysts. As they enter their senior year, in 2019, we have 7,544 students. We've grown dramatically. And in order to do so, we've been very fortunate that the school committee has given us the funds to be able to allocate some of these resources and address some of these needs. We've increased our guidance counselors from seven to nine, but we've really dramatically increased the number of school adjustment counselors and social workers from nine to 23. Because we really understand that this is a critical need for kids to be able to address some of the needs. As we see this, uh, we, we've really tried to provide kids with those social, emotional skills and we've, our hypothesis over the past 12 years has been that more school adjustment counselors can help address those needs and, and provide the appropriate services for students. At this time, we still have no school psychologists in the district and we, we were fortunate enough three years ago to hire one uh board-certified behavior analyst for the district to address some of those needs. So what we're seeing is this giant increase in our school adjustment counselors, they're being asked to do many different things. First, we've really focused on social, emotional skill development. It's very important for kids to be able to identify what those needs are and sometimes if kids act out, their behaviors are just a skill deficit. They need a little bit more work in a certain area to address their own social or emotional regulation. So uh, school adjustment counselors also provide individual and group counseling. That's a big piece of it. We, they do social skills groups or they provide individual counseling for students based on what their needs are right here during the school day. And another big thing that our social, uh, social workers do or our school adjustment counselors is anytime there is a crisis in the school or there is a need for an intervention, they, they act on that, they make referrals to outside agencies. Over time, we've also had them developing behavior plans for students, conducting functional behavioral assessments, providing IEP service delivery and evaluating psychological needs. And what we found is that these first three areas are really within the realm of the expertise of the school adjustment counselor. So we see that social, emotional, skill development, individual and group counseling, and crisis intervention is what they are expert at. And we're asking them to do more things that might be a little bit outside of their expertise. So for example, developing behavior plans and functional behavioral assessments would be better suited by board-certified behavior analysts. And providing IEP service delivery and evaluating psychological needs would be more suited by a school psychologist who has that expertise. So what we're proposing is moving forward is restructuring our student support and creating support teams that have diverse areas of expertise. So you'll see that the school adjustment counselor paired with a BCBA and a school psychologist as part of a comprehensive team would be able to better meet the needs of our students. So we're looking to move forward and if funding uh permits us to, and hopefully the, the funding that a lot of people have advocated for, we'll, we'll be able to come in and we'll be able to create some of these teams, even if we pilot it first, so that we can better address the needs of the students. And when they act out or they have certain needs, we can deploy the correct resources to really get to the heart of what they need and then get them re-engaged in school and be, and better address those needs. them re-engaged in school and better address those needs through a more comprehensive team. So that's something that we're looking to move forward to. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the committees? Ms. Ty.
I just wonder, and it's pretty difficult probably to get board-certified on these, are there a number of these people available that we'll be able to find, or will we be, you know, rushing around trying to find them, scouting everywhere?
So...
And I suppose that it's somewhat dependent upon how much we can pay, too.
Of course, and I think that in terms of board-certified behavior analysts, there are a number that work for contract agencies, or hospitals, or other agencies, very similar to our related service providers, our speech therapists, physical therapists, and occupational therapists. And there are people who really want to work in the schools, and I might be a little biased, but I think the Revere Public Schools is an excellent place to work, and I do think people will want to come here. And I think that there are, there is a real need for people to work in the schools, but there's also a lot of benefit for working in the schools. And I think what we've seen is that there is a need out there, and some people don't want to work in the hospital and on the weekends and things like that, and the school schedule is also advantageous to some people, whether it's because of their family obligations, or they might work per diem after school, or something like that. So there are opportunities, and I think we could hire some really high-quality people.
Ms. Grabber, listen.
Mr. Vidal, if and when we get the funding that could possibly support these teams, you know, how many teams would you put together to start, and which schools, how would you identify which schools, because obviously we wouldn't be able to have them in every school to start with a pilot program. How would you identify which schools were in the most need?
So we would look to do it by size, and we'd have teams that would be shared. So right now, we have school adjustment counselors and social workers in every building, and we wouldn't look to change that. We'd still look to do that. And what we'd look to do is create, you know, maybe a situation where two elementary schools, one housed a BCBA three days a week, and the other housed a school adjustment counselor, and they shared them. And we would work out, you know, so they would work across a couple of schools, similar to what, we have a similar policy with our evaluation team leaders and with some of our service delivery providers, so the speech therapists, occupational therapists, and the PT, some of them travel between schools. So what we'd like to have is people that are anchored to no more than two schools, and that they would be there a couple of days a week. But having that access and having that area of expertise in the building, where they could meet with teachers on their prep period, or they could go in and observe kids during the school day, that would really help us to deliver some better services. So we would try to split them up by size of school and dependent on need.
Anybody else? Thank you for your report, Dr. Vidal.
Thank you.
Dr. Kelly.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is our student representative report.
Thank you. I just wanted to go off, starting off, saying congratulations to the AP Lang students who competed in the annual myopoli competition. For any of yous that do not know what the myopoli is, it's a competition where students research a topic from the summer leading up to now. They write like a paper about it and prepare a three-minute presentation to present in front of a panel of experts. And I just wanted to congratulate the winners of this year's myopoli. Congrats to Ava Hawk, who placed first, Michael Roncevich, who placed second, Jason Acosta, and Kobe Everton, who tied at third place. Second on the list is, congrats to the JRTC marksmanship team, who placed first at the Koma Math competition. Also, congrats to their RHS cheerleading team, who placed second at the state championship and recorded the highest score in RHS history, so congrats to that. Congratulations to the robotics team, who competed at regionals in New York, and also congratulations on their first-place win this weekend at the competition held here at RHS. Good luck for their next competition, which is going to take place in Shrewsbury. Shout-out to the Revere High School Speech and Debate Team, who represented RHS at the Needham Competition. Specific shout-out to Marcus Evans, who reached the impromptu finals, Minnashik and Jason Acosta, who placed second in mixed duo, Kevin Cano, who placed second in declamation, Jason Acosta, again, who placed fourth in group discussion, and Anthony Insognia, who reached novice oral finals. Good luck to their upcoming competition in state finals. And shout-out to all the students who performed at the RHS Sound Show, which was two weeks ago, and the Walk for Health will be taking place tomorrow at the Fieldhouse from 2:30 to 4:30 for those, for the students who need community service, and just as a way to promote well-being of the students' health and, yeah. And Junior Prom will also be held this Friday, March 29th, at Danvers Port Yoclo. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay, next on the calendar is public participation. I would like to go to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
I can speak in Spanish, and she's going to translate. Gracias por la oportunidad de ver sobre proveedor de limpieza en esta instalación.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding to the cleaning providers at the school facility.
Mi nombre es Jose Fajardo, y vivo aquí en Riviera, 14 Trulow Avenue.
My name is Jose Fajardo, and I am here as a resident, and...
Is that good?
So could you please repeat what you said for last?
So...
Mi nombre es Jose Fajardo, vivo aquí en Riviera, 14 Trulow Avenue. Soy residente de Riviera.
So my name is Jose Fajardo. I'm a resident here in Riviera, and I live at 14...
Trulow Avenue.
Trulow Avenue.
Estoy aquí como residente de la ciudad de Riviera y como miembro del distrito 615 de CIU.
So I'm here as a resident of the city of Riviera and as a member of 32 BJSI.
También estoy aquí como padre preocupante, preocupado de dos niños que asisten al distrito escolar de Riviera.
I am also here as a concerned parent of two children attending the Revere School District.
Desde hace varios años, la ciudad ha otorgado sistemáticamente el contrato de limpieza para alguna de las instalaciones escolares de M&amp;M Cleaning. Esta compañía tiene su sede en Molden, Massachusetts, y trabaja principalmente para entendidas públicas financiadas por los contribuyentes en las ciudades y pueblos de Massachusetts.
So for several years now, the city has systematically awarded a cleaning contract for some of the school facilities to M&amp;M Cleaning. This company is based in Molden, Massachusetts, and works primarily for taxpayer-founded public entities in Massachusetts cities and towns.
El año pasado, la ciudad de Cambridge encontró a M&amp;M Cleaning y su presidente Marcelo Pompa en violación de la ordenanza de salario digno de la ciudad. Sus hallazgos incluyen la falta de pago de la ordenanza de salario digno de la ciudad, la falta de mantenimiento de los registros de la nomanía, la subcontratación ilegal de otros proveedores. Para realizar tareas, pesar de una prohibición a su contrato con la ciudad, como resultado de las violaciones, la compañía fue multada y se prohibió la consideración de nuevos contratos por un periodo específico.
So last year, the city of Cambridge found M&amp;M Cleaning and its president Marcelo Pompo in violation of the city living wage ordinance. Their findings include failure to pay the city living wage ordinance, failure to maintain payroll records, illegally subcontracted other vendors to perform duties despite prohibition in its contract with the city. As a result of the violation, the company was fined and bear from consideration for further contracts for a specific period.
Además, la oficina del procurador general de Massachusetts ha procesado penalmente a M&amp;M Cleaning contractor in Molden a través de su presidente Marcelo Pompa. Otro funcionario de la compañía por múltiples cargos de clasificación errónea y fraude de compensación de trabajadores. La alegancia que durante años la compañía ocultó casi tres millones en nomanía para evadir el pago de miles de dólares en primero de segundo de compensación para trabajadores.
Furthermore, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office has criminally indicted Molden, Molden-based M&amp;M Cleaning, through its president Marcelo Pompo and another company official, official, and multiple counts of misclassification in workers' comp fraud. The attorney general alleges that for years, the company counseled almost three million in payroll to evade payment, to evade paying thousand in workers' compensation insurance premiums.
Estos delitos son graves y comete escolar. No debe permitir que un contratista irresponsable que no cumpla con las regulaciones de la ciudad y las leyes estatales realice negocios en las instalaciones escolares. Nos preocupa que el comité esté exponiendo a los miembros de la comunidad escolar y la contribuyente otorgue los contratos de servicios de limpieza a este tipo de proveedores. Además, nos preocupa que continúe haciendo negocios con contratistas irresponsables que se involucren en participar ilegales en varias, un mensaje equivocado a nuestros hijos.
These are serious offenses, and the school committee should not allow an irresponsible contractor that fails to comply with the city regulations and state laws to conduct business in the school facilities. We are concerned that the committee is exposing members of the school committee and taxpayers by awarding the cleaning services contract to these kind of vendors. Moreover, we are concerned that continuing doing business with irresponsible contractors that engage in illegal practices will send the wrong message to our children.
Por lo tanto, respetuosamente le pedimos que tome en consideración el bienestar de los estudiantes de Riviera, el futuro de nuestras familias, al tomar una decisión sobre la ajustación del contrato de limpieza.
Therefore, we respectfully ask that you take the welfare of Revere students and our family's future into consideration when making a decision on the awarding of the cleaning contract.
Thank you for your time. Dr. Kelly, please.
Can we get a copy of the statement? Yeah, okay, all right. So I do want to share that there's not a whole lot I can say, but I can tell you that this case is in the city solicitor's office right now, and he is working with the attorney general's office, and we are no longer under contract with M&amp;M Cleaning.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If I may, you know, not only does the city, but the school committee has been on record in past labor disputes that we firmly support union contracts, that we firmly support paying a living wage, and paying not only a living wage, but a just wage, and will continue to take that stance as we move forward. But as the superintendent said, she can't say too much about that right now, but that's our philosophy and has been for many years. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Do you guys want to speak? Both of you, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi. I'm not good at speaking. My name is Jocelyn Lainez, and I'm a new resident to Riviera, and I'm a single mom of a five and six-year-old who I'm currently transferring from Everett to Riviera.
Can I help her? May I help her?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Okay, I'm Madeline Santana. I'm a resident. I live at 5 Eastern Avenue. I am a current assistant director at Harvard University, and also an IEP advocate here in Riviera, Arlington, and Cambridge. But I'm not here for the IEP, I'm just here for helping her. So her request is, I am a mother of Natalie and Adrian Ortiz-Lainez, who are currently being transferred from the Everett Public Schools to the Revere Public Schools. I have previously sent a request to have the children attend the Hill School instead of the Lincoln School. As a single full-time working mother, it is almost impossible for me to take my children to the Lincoln School due to the time schedule. The later start will cause her to arrive late every day to work, and she might not be able to keep the job. The Hill School will be a better choice for the family because of the earlier start time. The earlier start time will allow her to be able to begin the day at 7:45, and she'll be able to receive help from a friend who has a son that attends the Hill, and essentially that person can, she can drop the kids off, and she can, that person can walk the kids to the Hill. And essentially, having Natalie and Adrian going to the Lincoln, it's actually very hard for, it's a hardship. And I know how the school is. You assign some of the kids where she's located, and on her behalf, we are just pleading if you can make, I know that the school, in my understanding, you are looking into more an earlier start by hearing the voices of the parents that are working. I personally work in Cambridge, as you know, and the community is very challenging. So if there's any way within, she just recently transferred, so we have ten to twelve more weeks of school, if you can grant her kids to be at the Hill, so that friend, she can drop them off, and the friend walks them for the, you know, twelve weeks or eleven weeks that we are, and then moving forward, if the approval of your earlier start for the next school year will be in place, I think she'll be in a better place. I know the exceptions are hard. Every family is an ecosystem. That is true, but we're here, so you can hear her story and even have a consideration for the twelve weeks remaining of the school year, so she can place Natalie and Adrian at the Hill School.
Thank you.
So Jocelyn and I actually spoke on the phone earlier in the week. The kids are entering, well, in this year, kindergarten in first grade. And the challenge I explained to her that, I don't know if everybody is aware of this, but we have an extreme overcrowding issue in the Revere Public Schools. And the one place where we have a little bit of flexibility is at the Beauchamp School, and I know that doesn't help her because the Beauchamp's not an expanded learning time school. The challenge with the kids going to Hill School is that they have even larger class size at those grade levels than the Lincoln School does. And the policy that we've had, that's always been our yardstick. If a parent is requesting a change, and it could be for a number of reasons, sometimes it's because they go to work early, sometimes, more often than not, it's because they have somebody who can support the family by taking the child to school and picking the child or children up after school. There's a lot of different reasons why parents request a non-neighborhood placement. And our measure is always, we'll do whatever we can to help the families, except when it has a negative impact on class size, because our class sizes are already way too big. And I know at the Hill School, our kindergarten classes in particular are around the mid twenties. They should be around seventeen or eighteen. And so it might feel like this is one case, it's one difference, one child isn't going to make a difference, except for the numbers of other parents that we've already said no to because of the class size regulation. And one of the things that I know I pride myself on as superintendent, and I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think that the committee feels the same way, based on the work that we've done together over the years, is you treat everybody the same. You don't, you don't give to one person that you can't give to another person. So I know, I know that it's compelling. We are trying to, as you mentioned, as I mentioned to Jocelyn... We are trying to, as you mentioned, as I mentioned to Jocelyn, and she clearly told you, to have our after-school providers create a morning program, and as you pointed out, that wouldn't start until next school year. It's not going to happen in the next ten or twelve weeks, but...
Put the mic on.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So essentially, as we look and tap into even the network that we have, I mean, we had tried to do the plan, and we don't think then that they will be able to attend, essentially. We have to have different, reach out to friends, families. I personally, you know, decided even to take my son, which was on IEP, very short, but we had a conversation, I think you remember my face or emails and everything, because of the challenging even myself, so I had to take him out of the district. Very regretful. So even though you're saying no, I just want a better space to think, because you don't have a bandwidth when you are welcoming other people coming to Riviera. I mean, I have my mother-in-law here, my brother-in-law, everybody is really attractive. I mean, I go to Lomberto's for dessert, I go to Market Basket, I buy my rich and sort at, you know, the local store. So I'm a Riviera person, and people are coming in, but it's really tight on the kids. Out of the seven thousand, I would like to know what is the percentage for special needs, and how one BCBA is not enough. And that's the hard decision I had to make taking my son. So I understand you're saying no, but I'm letting you know, maybe those kids for twelve weeks then will not be able to attend a school, and that's the compromise. She's compromising on having the security and even compromising, you know, this is a friend I will trust, and God guard these kids while she's, you know, transferring to Cambridge. That's her compromise, right? Like the security of the kids even on a friend's hands. And I hear that, I know the size and everything, but I don't hear even you compromising for twelve weeks. And that's our plea here. I mean, maybe this kid's for twelve weeks. We are trying our best to tap into the network of community, and it has very hard to find someone to help her in this moment, so I just want to, you know, have...
Hi, my name is Gloria. I'm a resident of Riviera, and I live on 111 Franklin Street. I've spoken to Dr. Vidal. I'm a homeschool mom. We homeschool our childrens. We have three children that we homeschooled. And as you were saying, that the kindergarten classes are very large, would you guys take into consideration, because I know that kindergarten, it's not mandatory for kids, for just taking Natalie on first grade, you know, while school, like whatever is left for school, so that I could take responsibility for Adrian at home? And would you guys be willing to do that? It would only be one child, like it's a plea that we're asking. Like I talked to him yesterday, this is a matter of a mom not being able to provide a home and food for the kids. And like you were saying, there's a lot of issues in regards to social problems, and we don't want our kids to go through this, you know, for them not having a food or a mom being worried and stressed that she can't afford to pay the rent or food for the house. So would you guys consider that?
To be honest, I don't recall the numbers for first grade off the top of my head. The kindergarten was the first one that struck out at me. I can take a look at those numbers, and I can give Jocelyn a call tomorrow. We can talk about that again. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, a pleasure to meet you, because I don't have a...
All right, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. We need a vote for the consent calendar. Your motion.
Mr. Frante? I'd like to pull a few items from the consent calendar to be read. The one regarding the grant from Massport to Seacoast, the one where the food service will be renewed, and the vehicle that's being disposed of by maintenance.
Okay, we have a couple of communications, starting off with the vehicle. A motion to dispose of a 2004 Chevy Express van by the Department of Maintenance. I'm writing, this is to the Riviera School Committee from Kyle Svenson, Director of Maintenance, I'm writing for your approval to disposal of an old vehicle that is no longer able to be used by the Department of Maintenance. The vehicle has the following specifications, obviously, which I don't think is really necessary. So a motion to dispose? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to dispose of the 2004 Chevy Express van.
Second?
All favor, all opposed. So voted.
So the second communication is the motion to approve a food service contract extension, a communication by Matt Cruz stating, please request that the school committee vote to exercise our renewal option and extend our existing food service management contract with Aramac Educational Services for a second year. This is the first extension, and this will be for the 2019-2020 school year. So a motion to approve the food service contract extension.
Second?
All favor, all opposed. So voted.
And the final communication is a motion to approve the acceptance of a grant by Massachusetts Port Authority. This is a grant that was written by Michael, Mr. Michael Flynn, from the Seacoast High School. The letter states, Dear Mr. Flynn, Acting CEO John Pankvicious, I might have killed that one, and the Massport Authority Board of Directors are pleased to support our organization enclosed. You will find a check for the amount of $5,705 payable to the City of Riviera Seacoast High School to support the purchase of twenty-five new Chromebooks. Motion to accept the grant.
Second?
All favor, all opposed. So voted. Now we need a total vote for the consent calendar. Well, all right, let's, we have a motion to accept the consent calendar.
All right, so moved, Mr. General.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella? Absent. Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Mayor Irego? Absent.
All right, next on the agenda is report a subcommittee's policy. Ms. Rizzo.
Yes, policy subcommittee met on March 15th. We talked about amending two of our policies and adopting one other. I'm just going to bring up some of the highlights of each one. The first one was on public participation at school committee meetings. So we discussed some of the grammatical errors and could appreciate having Ms. Ty attend the meeting to help us with that. But to highlight some of the additions, guidelines from the state and federal free speech laws were taken into consideration. Also, all remarks are respectful and addressed through the chair of the meeting. We really don't have a problem with that, but we're going to make sure we all stay respectful for each other. Comments must concern the educational goals, policies, budget, or performance of the superintendent, and public participation will be known as public speak. The policy subcommittee is recommending that these be adopted by the Riviera School Committee. So moved.
Do you want to roll it up now?
Sure.
Okay, a roll call, please.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella? Absent. Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Mayor Irego? Absent.
Continue.
Second one is homeless students enrollment rights and services. First, I want to thank Dr. Vidal and Doug Goodwin on helping us out, updating this policy. So some of the recommendations, transportation will last until the end of the school year in which a student is permanently housed. Preschool students can remain where they attend after they become permanently housed. Preschool students have the right to receive transportation. These amendments would comply with Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, and this policy subcommittee is recommending that these amendments be taken up by the Riviera School Committee. So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella? Absent. Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Mayor Irego? Absent.
Continue.
The third one is a new one, so we're asking to adopt it. It's the distribution of literature and info in the schools. This policy is brand new. It would, some of the details are, the school committee will not endorse or sponsor any of the agencies that will be asking for these flyers to be passed out. There will also be a disclaimer included on all flyers. The flyers need to be approved in a timely manner by the superintendent. Translation in languages, they are to be translated in languages used by the Riviera Public Schools. Program and event must be held within the City of Riviera, and e-fliers will be an alternative to distribution of paper flyers. So at this time, the policy subcommittee is recommending that this policy be adopted by the Riviera School Committee. So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
I just want to add, there was some word change in by Dr. Vidal that I have incorporated, and I'll pass out the fresh copies. Thank you.
Thank you. Old business. Ms. Ty?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we award to all non-union employees of the Riviera Public Schools the same percentage increase in salary granted to all union employees to wit, over a period of three years, two and a half percent, three percent, and two and a quarter percent. So moved. I'd just like to say that it's what I think we feel with every contract, that we give the most we can under the circumstances. And if I had a million dollars, I'd be giving it to them because they're just worth that. But we don't. So I'd like, you know, to thank them for all the hard work, because it's in their souls and in their minds that they should serve the kids in Riviera, and so we give them what they can.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes.
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
At this time, any new business? Any school committee interests? Ms. Rizzo?
Just want to say, I have the honor of attending the National School Board Conference this weekend as a Riviera School Committee person. I look forward to the workshops. I've spent about two evenings going through all the workshops, trying to figure out which ones would be the best, but they were all so really important, not only in our district, but throughout. I am looking forward to listening to Sir Ken Robinson. He is a TED speaker on creativity and innovation, so I'm looking forward to hearing from him. Also, I signed up for a couple of workshops that are pre-conference on student engagement in school culture and the impact of, I forget what I was going to say. Okay? Oh, my gosh, more so lately. No, it was mostly on our Spanish population and the 2020 census, and how it does impact our schools. And then also, I'm looking forward to Michelle Gay, her and a parent of, she was a mother of a child that, at Sandy Hook. Diane, did you, you saw her, right? Yeah, so I'm really looking forward to listening. She has a Safe and Sound Schools program, so I'm really looking forward to seeing and listening to her. So hope this little brain can bring back all the information I possibly can to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ty?
Thank you, Stacy, for representing us and bringing back that information. But I'd like to give a shout out to our own superintendent here, because I was at a legislative conference on another subject this morning, talking to two senators and three representatives, and when Rosely Vincent introduced me as being from Riviera, all of them said, oh, you have, what's her name, Kelly? That's right, an Irish name, they said. And she's leading the way, and I know she's been leading in all the conferences since March, when she was at the Women's Innovation One, all the way through, to going, leading in the project that we're trying to get the budget fair to us and to all of the other one, and she's always there on the front line and always makes us proud. So, and I hope she'll continue to do that for many years to come.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have any motions? Do we have anything for executive session? None? Adjournment? We need a motion to adjourn. It's ninety seconds. Thank you. And our next meeting will be April 24th at 6 o'clock in the Ferenti School Committee Room. Twenty-third, sorry about that. Twenty-third at this Ferenti School Committee Room. Thank you.